Good evening. I'd like to call the North Grandford Board of Education, or meeting Thursday, September 19th, 2024, to order at 6:06 PM. Roll call. Chairman Gomdies?
Here.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Here.
Secretary Ziana?
Here.
Julie Bannen?
Here.
Zachary Canada?
Here.
Kim Dawson?
Here.
Victoria Alonso?
Here.
Salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any visitor's comments that need to be addressed? Okay, seeing none. Who wants to stood up?
So, thank you. It's an honor again to continue with two members of our senior class who will be representing the student body and bringing to ideas, suggestions, critiques of things that are happening each and every day. I don't, they, again, Mr. Steffler, incredible job. The bios are in front of you on page one and two. They're lengthy, I'm not going to read through all of them. Aleah Rizzuti has accomplished so much through AP classes, the Yukon ECE course. She's involved with every form of government, has just been a wonderful ambassador, involved with the band program as well. So, we're really fortunate to have Aleah, and welcome, Aleah.
Welcome. Very aggressive.
And Noah, as you can see, Noah Allen. Did you have Miss Bannon for a teacher? See? Wow, Miss Bannon.
You know.
You did well.
Thanks.
And if you look through and for Noah's accomplishments, there's many. And again, with Quiz Bowl, drama, involved with everything, global affairs, he's looking to study post-high school plans, and all of our AP classes. And I, you know, we talk about what this affords our students when we, when we push them, when we give those opportunities to engage in these types of rigorous courses, this is, this is what we get. And so, we're proud of both of you, and thank you for dedicating your time to the work.
Can I ask you a question, Noah? What's the Quiz Bowl?
Quiz Bowl, it's like a trivia team at our school.
Oh, that's fun.
Yeah.
That's cool. Okay, thank you.
I think it's pretty competitive.
Wow.
These matches. Okay.
Perfect. So, moving on to the consent agenda. Hold your table motion.
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda. As saved.
We got a second. We got a second.
That's a second right there.
All seconds. Roll call. Chairman Gomdies?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Ziana?
Yes.
Julie Bannen?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
The question, the field trip, water for elephants, is that a play, or is that a concert?
It's a play. My daughter is going for chorus and dance.
Oh, nice.
It's great. So, it's not an overnight, we do not have to vote on it, it's just for informational, but it's a great opportunity for, for the students. The other thing I want to thank for the donation, Touchdown Club is going to donate 12 football helmets, they're, they're the highest quality that you can play with, and it's very generous of them to, to make that donation to our boys. So, we want to thank them and recognize them. And Jackie Gemetti for taking the trip. It's a lot of work, a lot of responsibility when you're taking students out of state.
Yes.
What age students are, please, maybe?
Six, seven, eight.
Right age as well?
Certain intermediate.
Nice.
Okay. You want to turn it over to? So, again, the best part of my job is to be able to see the pre-K through grade 12 growth. Our art department is phenomenal, and we're recognizing students this evening that were chosen because of their artistic abilities. And the calendar, if you have a chance to flip through, I put calendars on, on the desktop, so you should have them. If you hadn't had a chance to look at it, it's spectacular to see and watch the growth of our students over time. I love doing this because they aspire to become like the big ones, the big guys, and they're great role models. So, they wouldn't do this or be able to do this without our teachers in our art department. We're spoiled here. We have dedicated, wonderful teachers that have been with us for many years. So, Liz Kaplan is the department chair. Laura McGinnis at the high school with Liz. They do a phenomenal job and offer an array of classes, including advanced prep. Elise Wardinson is here. Sue Horn, Susan Horn, and Christina Lucian. They're all here tonight supporting our students. So, what we're going to do... Is we're going to have Liz, come on, we're going to read the names. The teachers of the students, please, come up as well when your students are called. They're going to go around, and I'm going to have them shake hands with the board members, just kind of walk on the boards. And then, parents feel free to take photos.
We want to thank the Board of Education and the School Maker for this opportunity. It's always wonderful to be able to support the arts in the community. And our art show will be May 7th this year, and it will be at our library. Also, we invite the public to come and see the students out there. And, you know, we're so proud of the calendar. So, thank you so much for coming this evening. So, the first student from Jerome Harrison, Lennon Gianfrico.
There's a lot, there's a lot of chords.
So, let me know who's going to go back this way, and have the board come.
Yeah. Yeah, you want to. And Lennon was her August calendar student.
And board consider.
We have two calendar artists from the month of April, from Jerome Harrison. One could be here this evening, but they both are Artemios Gianopoulos and Natalia Simone. And our September artist from Jerome Harrison School is Rayland White. From TDS, I'd like to ask Elise Robinson to come on. And one of our October student artists from TDS is Giuliana Cassino. Oh, do you want to? Uh, we have two calendar, hang on one second. We have two calendar artists from June. One could be here tonight, Kalia Mair. And the other calendar artist from Chulakamachi here is Kennedy Cyrus. The next calendar artist from July from TDS is Andrew Stappalo. And our October student artist from TDS is Anna Dela Soto. Um, we have our August student artists from NDHS. And two could be here, um, Grace School, Nina, and Emily's Darrens. And we do have here this evening Eden Ames. We have three December artists from NDHS, one should be here this evening. There is Moni Barak, Lance Castro, and last but not least, Quinn. Mike Oliver Thorne and I would like to congratulate the four high school artists who've been to be here this evening. We have September, um, NDHS is Samantha Johnson. We have, um, March, Ralph Ross Cepeda. And we have May, Gabrielle Sinersha and Gianna Carter. Thank you so much.
So, we are going to dismiss all of the students and parents. Thank you for coming out and supporting your family and your children this evening. I think we picked up on, I think on the connection, the relationship with the students, with their teachers, some that they had earlier in their years, and just how comfortable and respectful they were when they walked through the line, and happy to see them, that's huge line. So, I want to thank all of you. Keep going, we can't wait to see you all over next year. And any pictures you can come with, we can put on our website, or we'll sit out on our website as well. And that's going to be the, we'll do the march. That's why you work, right? That's why you do it.
That's the fun part.
It is, that's what you do.
And three of those kids are dangerous.
What are you doing, art in that house?
Right?
You're, you're doing so much. But the artwork.
Two weeks ago. They, uh...
I see you, girl.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you, as always.
Well, Noah, Aleah, I am sorry, you skipped over your report, but I would love to hear it.
Freshen orientation for August 22nd for incoming grade nine students and their parents. For NDHS, including programs in foster, flex time, and associated with school attendance, school policies, and scheduling. Assistant Principal Megan Lee, Dino Students Melavolge, and Dino Students Brian Dobrovsky presented during this event along with other classmates who led tours of the facility. All were provided a pizza luncheon in the cafeteria at the close of the morning. Students received promos, and students and parents signed the district to acknowledge the acceptable use policy agreement.
The NDHS guidance department posted the annual to be said college planning note on September 10th. The event provided information to support the seniors and their families, including materials about the college education process and financial aid. Then, NDHS heard the night for open house was held on September 12th. Parents heard, invited to attend, and then follow their children's schedules on a modified top room. Stuap provided an overview of the curriculum, forced expectations, general information about the foster program.
Ongoing planning is underway for the upcoming homecoming week, which will be September 30th to October 10th. This will include home athletic contest, being engaged during spring week, a small field day, and a homecoming dance. A faculty committee involving the administration, the athletic directors, student council advisors, and other staff who have volunteered to assist is duty regular.
NDHS junior, Philip Baxter, has received an appreciation letter from Sergeant DeColisio, who is stationed at Henningside. Last year, he was one of many students who participated in a letter recognition held at NDHS just prior to Veterans Day. In response to Phil's correspondence, Sergeant Young sent him a letter of appreciation, a challenge coin, and an American flag.
Oh, how nice. There you go. Well, thank you guys so much. We're not going to do...
It wasn't so bad, right? Now, you are, you're free to go. And, um, so, thank you.
Thank you, guys. I'll see you next month.
Yep. Keep us updated.
Back to you, one communication.
Communications. You have all the items in your board packet. The administrative team is here presenting questions. If not, you'll see we're off to a great start. We've been really busy, acclimating, getting ready for the big move, and things are well. For you to hire, no new certified staff have been hired since the August special meeting, so there's no updates there. And I'll turn it over to Martha for the finance report.
Yeah, so you should have the, um, finance report in front of you. As always, I just highlighted a few of the objects that I wanted to highlight. I believe they're the same ones that were on your, our report last month. One for substitute salaries, which just identifies that currently, um, we have $26,000 spent in overtime salaries, I'm sorry, excuse me, substitute salaries, um, for custodians, and that is for, um, staff that may be out on vacation or other leaves. And in addition, um, as you know, summertime is our busiest time with building projects, so we do, um, hire some additional staff during that time to, uh, help the custodial maintenance team get, get those things done in preparation for the new year. Our health insurance line, uh, as you saw last month, is right now showing an overage, um, which is normal, because as we go through the months, we begin to credit the payroll contributions from our employees who participate in our insurance, and then that, um, overage comes down through the year. And also, um, as I highlighted last month, our property and liability insurance currently has an overage of $22,000. And that is because there was an increase, um, due to two main factors. An industry increase in our, um, in property values and insurance rates across the state. And, um, there was also some municipal, um, not in, not in our town, but throughout Connecticut municipalities, there were, um, awards for cases, which, uh, the industry believes will impact, uh, future rates and, and possible, uh, claims and awards, so that also increased the, the rates, um, not only for us, but for, uh, the town and, and other towns as well throughout the state. Um, let's see. And under equipment, there are several things, um, that have been quoted to equipment, so we did spend, uh, money for, uh, tables at the learning labs and whiteboards. We replaced an amplifier in the auditorium, a new control valve for the air conditioning system at Jerome, uh, window units for Totucket. We needed to replace the Douglas, uh, AC system in the server room at MBIS, which was, um, significant cost, and we did replace the field hockey goals at the high school. In regard to Fund 25, right now, we're, uh, I believe at the end of June, there was $5 remaining. If you remember, we were under direction, um, from the, from the board to spend all of the funds from Fund 25, even though it is a non-lapsing account. So, right now, there is no Fund 25. We are, we do have funds set aside, $461,000, that, um, once we get the audit completed, and the auditors believe that that, in fact, that amount is remaining in our general fund, that that will be moved over to, uh, Fund 25 for, um, use. But as of right now, there is, there is nothing, because we need to be insured that, right, the audit proves that.
Right. I have a question.
Sure.
So, going forward, do you, can you, you got those money, if you put this money in there, you can carry that over to the following?
Yes, it is a non-lapsing account.
So, you don't have to spend down that?
Correct.
Really? Okay, so, as the chair, I would, I would recommend you don't spend money that you don't have to spend, and just keep it in there and keep it rolling to the next fiscal year if you don't have expenses that need to be taken care of.
So, don't spend it just to spend it?
Just, right. Don't spend just to spend is what, is what I prefer to see you do with that account. And the other question I have about this account, I know the law has changed, can you just give us what has changed this year in Fund 25, let's see?
Um, it is my understanding that the, and I'm not sure, because it is a new law, so I'm just going to kind of paraphrase to my understanding. I believe that, um, we ourselves can, if, when in fact the audit is complete and that balance is remaining, I believe the new law says that we can, uh, direct those funds into the non-lapsing account, whereas before, it required a vote from, um, the, the governing town.
The governing, fighting the stroke?
Yes, yeah, the town.
It shifted over to the board event?
Yeah, it shifted from the town or...
So, does the board event now have financial oversight over those expenditures that come out of that?
Yes.
So, then, we would be, um, we would be, it would be brought to us if there was an expenditure that needed to be made that we could then vote on? Or is that, is that not required?
Well, I mean, I, we always seem to bring those, you know, those large expenditures, you know, in some kind of communication to you, you know, whether it's myself or, or Scott, we always communicate what's going on.
Well, after speaking with the attorney, she made it clear that we do not have to vote on the expenditures.
And there's $5 in the account right now.
That you guys have the autonomy to take care of that.
No, they're spending everything, it sounds like. No, we're, it's going to, it's going to be at the end of the year. I mean, we, we, there's too many moving parts right now, the winter, um, any building issue that comes up where we may not have planned for, there's a lot of things. So, the charge was to spend that down, we did. Now, moving forward, if we accrue and gain in that account, and there's things that we want to do at the end of the year, we'll bring it to you and show you what it is, um, and move forward. Over the years, we've spent well over a million dollars from that 25 account, many for capital projects. So, you know, looking forward, it can work two ways. It can be offset, and the town could say, you've got $150,000, and then use that towards next year budget, and you're going to get X amount of dollars. So, you know, there's two sides of it. You ultimately now have control over the spending of that money.
And any of the purchases or expenditures that we do, regardless of the fund, all follow our same process. So, it begins as a requisition, goes through, um, a three, three, um, electronic path approval process, um, then it turns into a PO, and then those items must be received. process, um, then it turns into a PO, and then those items must be received, um, and then the invoice has to match, and all those things are outlined in our internal controls. So regardless of whether the expenditure is, say, from our cafeteria or food service account, or whether it's from the general fund or Fund Twenty-Five, it's all following the same, same process.
Okay. Thank you. Is this, but is this, we may be getting this, this four sixty-one, four sixty-five, if that is the true number, so is that gonna go into the Fund Twenty-Five?
Yes, so after our audit is done, and the auditors need to have the audit completed by, I believe it's December thirty-first--
Okay, December.
--to the, to the state.
Okay.
So when they come back with the final number that remains in the general fund, then that will move over to Fund Twenty-Five.
So new funds may go in, in January at some point?
Yeah, whenever we get that, when we get that nod, yes. Um, and as far as, uh, family resource center and the food service, um, naturally, we're, you know, we just started, um, we are in the middle of September, so next month I will provide you a report, um, for September for both, um, our family resource center and our cafeteria.
Excellent. Thank you.
Now, we're on the special education.
So I'm, I'm pleased to have Sarah Alberta here to just share some news. Uh, she was at a, uh, conference recently and came back and was, um, as she should have been, very proud of the good work that's happening, uh, with, within the department and the leadership, and she's just gonna share some of that news with you tonight. So Sarah-- Watch the wires.
Um, so every year, the Bureau of Special Education at the safety department holds a meeting, a back-to-school meeting, um, for special education administrators, and both myself as well as Kathy Thompson, who's the advisor of special ed, um, we attended that. Um, the meeting is really an opportunity to talk about state trends, to talk about things that need to be focused on based on those state trends, um, and they reflect on data. So to give you a little bit of background on that, um, a couple of the things that the state asks us to do every year is to report out on certain numbers, um, things that were tracked on, there's thirteen indicators in total. Um, as a, as a district, we were highlighted, uh, in two of those. Um, one of those is our ability to provide students with disabilities time with non-disabled peers. So the expectation at the state is that we offer at least eighty percent of our population spend at least eighty percent of their time with typical peers, and that means in the general education setting. So the state average, so again, our target is eighty percent, the state average is sixty-five, we were over eighty percent as a district. We were one of twenty-four districts out of a hundred and thirty-eight to be recognized with that number. More importantly than that is that this wasn't a one-off. We received acknowledgements for year-after-year improvements in that area. Um, so again, you know, when we talk about these numbers, this is a, this is a snapshot in time, um, but we're showing improvements year after year, providing more and more opportunities for our students with disabilities to be able to spend time with non-disabled peers. Um, one of the, the other ones that we were looked at was our students who are placed in a separate setting. So those would involve students who are identified as having disabilities, who are placed in a, a setting that is more restrictive, so it's been determined that they require a higher level of care than what we would be able to provide in their community setting. Um, the state average for that, again, there's, there's not really an expectation because it can be very unique, um, but what the state is looking at is a five-point-eight percent, that's the state average, we are below three percent. So we have, at this point in time, we have eleven students who are currently placed in private settings, um, and that number, while it changes year to year, um, we do take a look at that, we provide as, as many opportunities for our students to return. Our goal is to provide students with their education in their community setting, um, and we do everything we can in order to make that happen. Um, we were acknowledged for that as well, we were one of fifty-four districts that met that, that, uh, three percent, um, number, and again, we were recognized for year-over-year improvement. In total, when we look at our identification rates across the state, so a couple of numbers that's just important for us to know and keep on our radar, the total number of students who we have in our district, and this is not just our trend, this is across the state, the number of students identified is increasing. Uh, the state average right now is seventeen-point-one percent, we are in the fifteen range, I believe last time I checked it was about fifteen-point-six percent identification rate. Um, one of the things that's important to know is that our numbers are increasing at both ends of the spectrum. As you know, the change in kindergarten age is, is impacting us, so we're, we're getting students much earlier. Um, we're also seeing the impact of COVID on some of our youngest learners who weren't provided with, weren't able to be provided with social opportunities, and so they're being identified in the preschool age. Um, and then on the other side, we have students now until the June after their twenty-second birthday. Um, so an example of that on an extreme end is if we have a student who's not gonna be turning twenty-two until July, um, we're gonna have them all the way through that year, and they'll be graduating the month before they turn twenty-three. Um, and that's our job, and that's okay, we have a fantastic transition program, um, but it's just important for us to keep those in mind. And then the other interesting data point is that our total number of students that are enrolled is going down. Um, and, and the chatter among us at the, at the beginning before we started, um, one of the pieces that I didn't really reflect upon, thank you, Tom, um, is that there is an increase, uh, trend in the state of students being enrolled in non-public schools, so private settings, not special education private settings, but other settings. So when we look at the numbers, yes, our numbers are going down in terms of total number of students enrolled in public education, however, those special education numbers are going up because we have quality programming. When we look at all that information, we look at it through the lens of this is the work of each building, this is the work of each teacher, um, for a student to be able to be in the general education setting, it takes a case manager that's willing to do the work, it takes a general education teacher that's willing to do the differentiation, it takes a building administrator that's on the same page with us. So this is the work of the entire department, the entire district. And so my appreciation goes out to them, both Kathy and myself have brought this to each department meeting to share the news, cause it is news to celebrate, but also that this is the why, this is why we do the work that we do, this is why we have hard conversations, and why we, we look at things not just at one glance, but continue to dig and, and make sure that everything that we do is in the best interest of students. So, um, it was a very proud moment for Kathy and I to be in that room of hundreds upon hundreds of administrators and to see North Branford's name highlighted. It was, it was a great moment for us and, and an exciting opportunity for us to come back and be able to share that with you guys.
That's great, Rachel.
Do you have any questions?
No, but can I just say, so my youngest with that girl, and he received speech therapy there, and I can say within days of the school year starting, like, he had, he had a PPT, he started there, and, and it is boom, boom, boom. So to see it firsthand how quick it goes, I'm really appreciative from a parent's standpoint.
That's good to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, can we round it? It's hard to believe, we're already, uh, toward the year, October twenty-sixth, it's a critical for IC stock and the food factory of North Branford, and again, it's an NBIS undertaking, so hey, you're up in the year to now and, uh, getting education out, and we'd love you to be present on that day to help out, or just come in and make a donation if you could. And if it really does, there's so many people we need right now in our community, and, uh, this just takes so much pressure off when we can keep those shelves stocked and keep our students involved in this activity, it goes without saying.
Is there a list of, of need for--
They do put a list out of what goes out and now it's becoming, what do, what do we send out?
They usually do a list, maybe a, a month before, but the general election that day is, is really any kind of, and it's not a parish lighting, but the families--
Not expired.
Not expired?
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yes, very important.
Very important.
It's a job to meet that up.
Yeah.
Okay, um, moving along, there's no, uh, any requests. Um, renovation project, I was at the school today, uh, they're ready to, to hand off the, uh, academic piece of the building, the gym is going to, uh, remain, uh, shut until, uh, the end of October, uh, due to the moisture level in the gym, it's not a surprise with the summer ahead. It's a multi-step process where the wood has to sit, it has to acclimate, and they have to get the, uh, humidity rate down to the five, and it's currently at nine. So with the weather changing, the floor is actually down, it's gotta cure, sit, and dry out, they have the heat running in there, and then they have to go through and prep it, paint it, seal it. So we're looking at October. The athletic department's done an amazing job, you know, working with our teams, and they understand this is part of the, the sacrifice of when you build, like we did, and, and will be in. Uh, and I know Mr. Steph has been working with the moving team, they were there today, actively setting up the classrooms, getting things in place, uh, so they're looking at the twenty-seventh, Mr. Steph.
Twenty-seventh, we'll, uh, move over the weekend, and then the thirtieth is our expectation, which is a month after we end those new classrooms.
So the thirtieth is coming quick.
Nice.
Sarah, that'll be nice, that'll free up some things, uh, for everyone else, cause we're sharing classrooms right now, teachers will go into their own rooms, the security office will get moved to a new location, and that will free up, uh, a mental health space for a social worker, so there's a lot of domino effect things happening right now, but everyone's been really patient and really anxious to, to, it's fantastic, I don't wanna say too much, but it's, wow. If you're, if you cook and bake and you see the corner anyone, you're gonna wanna go in class.
You're a father.
Yeah, uh, school, school security update, we'll do that in executive session, um, Mr. Lonsdale and I have been doing a lot of work, um, on our plan and, and looking at it and making sure that the law's current with everything, so we'll fill you in there. That's it for, for me. Good evening, boys. Okay, can we move on to negotiations? We, we have a very successful negotiation with our administrators, we just finished up today. Agreement tonight, this time? Now, next fourth meeting, something to work on. It was a, a really great process, I wanna thank administrative team for, um, their input, their flexibility, uh, their support of the process, and, uh, it was, it was really positive. So, but I have a break now for our next RNEH school, so it's, it's nice to get them all covered up. Yeah. But you've an operation with no meaning, curriculum obstruction, next meeting. We were, um, given information about, um, the, um, RTHB, the segment that we had to, come up with a program, and we were using WIT and Wisdom for great months, and, um, implemented in September, they had done stop watch year, but it was just implemented, and they're doing K three, and they're doing seven, eight, or five, and, um, there was a grant that paid for the program for the first year. Wow. That's a lot of money. Quote, review, and add?
No, that, that's the overview, um, extensive process to adopt a state-approved model, um, which got us to witness the models that I landed, um, spent a lot of time researching it, visiting other schools that are implementing it, and I just wanna comment, I know I did it with the subcommittee, but Heather Lynn is our K five, there's, you know, she's spent an extensive amount of time, um, preparing, researching, collaborating, and really building and follow, learning for the teachers and support, um, to take on a brand-new curriculum, which, you know, teachers do often, and people badly feel that, but, um, I think they feel prepared, they're excited, there's a lot to it, um, and take it slow, and, and happy with the, the grant covering a lot of the costs.
Perfect. Thank you. Pensional meeting, policy. Mr. Lonsdale is gonna do a presentation on AI, answering questions for you. He wants to turn these lights, this bank of lights on?
Um, you made an act, you were a seat right there when I asked you to-- I call it as for where to protect yourself from areas, it's usually right where you are.
Yeah. You might wanna turn that light back on. I'm not sure.
All right, so before we start, I just wanna make sure we're all kinda starting from the state of understanding. When we're talking about generative artificial intelligence and potentially allowing its use in the district, we are only talking about allowing it for staff. So there is no generative artificial intelligence platform, to my knowledge, that is currently legal for students eighteen and under in the state of Connecticut, um, and therefore we are not discussing allowing it with students at that time. That may come in the future, um, and I'll, I'll touch on that a little bit, that that is in the works in terms of companies trying to get platforms that are legally allowable with minors thirteen and older, um, but at this time, that is not something that's permissible in the state of Connecticut for any school district, um, including North Branford. Um, so we're talking about generative artificial intelligence because it's mentioned within our policy for staff and acceptable uses for our staff, okay? So you may have heard of some of these generative artificial intelligence models, ChatGPT, Copilot, which is from Microsoft, and Gemini, which used to be Bard, which is Google's model. Um, there are many different models out there, these are the largest because they're multimodal, meaning they do many different things, right? So there are very specific models out there that just do one thing, and I'll, I'll talk about that in a second, where there are models out there that only give you pictures of dogs. So if you only want a model of generative AI that gives you pictures of dogs, there's one out there for you. Um, but generally speaking, most people are using these larger models that can do a variety of tasks for you. So I wanna start off with just generally speaking, what is generative artificial intelligence? And there's two kind of definitions that I like to think about, cause I think it helps give us some context. So it's a type of artificial intelligence technology that produces content, and, and right now, it produces text, imagery, audio, and synthetic data, meaning it can make up data sets for us, right? But it doesn't kinda make it up out of nowhere, right? Our, generative artificial intelligence uses, um, what it has learned to create new content. So it is to ingest content from the real world, whether it be text, whether it be images that it sees in the real world, whether it be data that it's seen in the world that, that was made, you know, normally, how we traditionally think about it, it uses that to then create new content on its own, right? But it doesn't create them out of thin air, it has to take in data from the real world, whether we give it text to read, whether we give it images to look at, whether we give it data to see, or whether we give it audio to listen to. All of that has to come from somewhere, basically gets fed into that model, and then that model can use that to create new content on its own. So here's a really simple example, right? So this would be a model that is very simple. If we gave this model only images of dogs, so thousands and thousands, if not millions of images of dogs, and basically give it the prompt, produce an image of a dog, there are models out there right now that can then create an artificial dog for you. It might create a dog breed that does not exist, but it would create one within the schema of what it's decided that's what a dog looks like based on the thousands or millions of examples of dogs that it's seen, right? This is a real prompt that I did with ChatGPT. So ChatGPT, uh, is a model that has ingested a huge amount of text, uh, they estimate at this point that it's, uh, ingested about a third of the Library of Congress's materials. So you think about it, that's millions upon millions of volumes. So I did this real prompt to the ChatGPT, and I said, describe North Branford, Connecticut in one hundred words, and that is exactly what ChatGPT told me about North Branford, Connecticut. If you wanna take a second to read that. Right? I think what's important to remember about these models is, and, and I, I think back to probably ten, fifteen years ago, when everybody was really concerned about the internet and Wikipedia, right? And thinking that students are just gonna go on there, they're gonna grab anything on there, they're gonna copy and paste it into their, into their, you know, papers, their materials, and we're not gonna know if it's any good, if it's accurate, if it's viable. And I think we've come a long way since then with teaching students about primary sources and how to vet the materials. The same thing is gonna happen with AI, right? AI is gonna do its best to, to grab what it's seen before and create some kind of prompt, but what we're gonna have to do is really train students on how do you look at something that's been generated with AI and see if it makes any sense or not, see if it's possibly true. Because unfortunately, AI can come up with a lot of really garbage, frankly. If it's trained on material that isn't good and isn't valid, then it can give you kind of an output or, or content that isn't valid also. So it's very important for us to kind of follow up with these things, thinking about, um, you know, how are we gonna vet and verify these things?
Good question. Like, when you get something like this, like--
Yeah.
--AI makes out a story about our record?
Yeah.
Do they store, like, do they have a source for it?
They do not, and, and that is part of the, I would say, issue might be too strong of a word, I think controversy right now with AI, right? Because if you think about it, for example, if ChatGPT used a third of the Library of Congress, really to, to design and create its model, some of that material might have been copyrighted. Now, some of it might not be, some of it may be in open-- Now, some of it might not be, some of it may be in open source, out of copyright at this point. But there are people out there who are currently suing Chat G P T and other A I models because they say, it is clear to us, based on what your model can put out, that it must have read my copyrighted material. It's the only way it could possibly know this, and therefore, you're using my knowledge to generate this content. Now, those are still being litigated, I can't speak to that. And it, and it is very hard to be able to prove that the A I model ingested that specific book. That being said, if Chat G P T, for example, could give you a summary of a book that's under copyright, how else could it do that without having probably read the book that's under copyright? So that is something that still needs to be determined in the years to come. I, I assume eventually this will become a model where content creators whose content was ingested into these models get some kind of fee similar to if you listen to a song on a streaming service, right? So if you ask an A I model something that uses a resource that's copyrighted, that content creator will probably eventually get some kind of fee related to it. That's my guess. Any other questions about this so far? No? So to take it a little bit further, and this one was for Scott, so this is using Google Gemini. So these models can also create images that have never existed before, right? So I said, I want to see a Thunderbird flying above Connecticut. That is a fan of the Dallas Cowboys. And that model merged those things together into this, right? So it, it took what it knew, it clearly had an aerial shot of Connecticut, it had an aerial shot of a Thunderbird, and also had the Dallas Cowboys logo, which is copyrighted, so I don't know how to Google out around that one. And they put them all into an image together, right? So that is what this can do at this point. You can give it a prompt and say, I want to see these group of things, and it can kind of merge them into one image, right?
We could have used it last summer.
Yeah, exactly. So what I want to get to though is, there are some really positive uses, in my opinion, about examples of using generative A I in the classroom and what it could do. So it could help us create personalized materials, it could help create interactive content for teachers, create writing aids for students, give really quick automated feedback. So I think of something like a Grammarly, if you've ever used Grammarly or Quill before. So think of, you know, grammar check from Word, but to the, the next level, right? So immediately giving feedback to a student if something's not grammatically correct and giving them options and suggestions as to, hey, you might want to think about rewriting this, or this tone might be better for this audience. There are a lot of programs out there that many people use, probably many people in this room use, that are using A I in the background that you probably don't think about, but that's how they're designing it right now. And also language sport, which we'll show in a second. A I is extremely good at translating material, especially technical material. And that's because it really follows a pattern. A I is very good at being trained in patterns and able to kind of translate that into lots of different languages. So a quick example of that, right? So this is a relatively simple algebra problem, taking, you know, chocolate, a chocolate bar problem and basically probably trying to put it into an algebraic equation. And so I wanted to ask it, you know, not just, you know, solve this problem, but explain step by step how to solve this problem in Spanish. So you can imagine, if you're an algebra teacher, who needs to be able to explain an algebra problem to a student in Spanish, and you don't speak Spanish, how can you do that and generate that in a way that is very similar to the textbook that you have? And I will say that it took Chat G P T less than a second to give this answer, to be able to explain in step by step basis. And I don't speak Spanish, but I can then compare it to the step by step version in English, and I can tell you that it is very accurate. So that is a very quick way that this type of technology can help us differentiate in the classroom quickly for a student. And it can do this in hundreds of languages already. So if you have a student come in who's, you know, an E L learner who doesn't speak English yet, or can't read fluently enough in English to understand mathematics, this is something that it can do for a teacher very quickly. This is something that a student eventually would probably be able to do themselves as With personalized materials, so here I just took a, a quick kindergarten standard mathematics. This is comparing objects of similar size. And in this case, I thought, well, let's create a personalized material maybe for a kindergarten student who's really into animals. I was thinking of my son, who's obsessed with animals. So create a cartoon that lets me directly compare the heights of two animals. That was the only prompt that I gave it, and it immediately gave me that cartoon. If I had given it more specific prompt, maybe I had a student who really loved tigers, for example, it could have given me instantly two tiger cartoons with different sizes and variations. So a quick way to be able to create some personalized materials for students. So I want to switch now to talking about the policy itself, just to make sure we all understand exactly what we're doing here. We really have two options, and, and I hope we've kind of clearly laid them out this time, because I know there was some confusion initially in terms of how it was laid out within the policy. Option A allows generative artificial intelligence for staff, but with guardrails. We, we are in no way just opening up a free for all for everyone to say, use A I however you want to use it, it's acceptable across the board. We are not doing that. So if, with any kind of technology that we have, we're always putting up guardrails and saying we have to use it in a safe and appropriate manner. And if we choose to approve this with option A, we will be offering P D for staff to help support them and help them understand what are safe and appropriate ways to use A I in the classroom. Option B is a complete and total ban on generative, generative A I for staff. So we're saying we cannot use it in any case, just to make sure.
This is for staff only?
And just to be, yes, this is for staff only.
I mean, this might be a good question, but why aren't they in an app? Like, what's the, what's holding anyone back from using an app?
Uh, because technically it would be against our policy. So there, there is nothing physically stopping them, so, you know, if I-
It's a program, unless you guys have four point, oh, you know, four point oh oh one now, because you work.
Yep.
You pay, they're, they're the fee to it, right?
Yep, correct.
But there's the free version.
Yep. So right now, we are saying that it's, it's something you're not supposed to be using on our district devices and on our district network. But there is nothing stopping them from going home, jumping on an A I platform and using it. We'd like to get to a point where if we allow it, we can then also have a data privacy agreement in place with that vendor that protects us. So should somebody put student content into an A I model, the last thing I want is for that A I, A I to ingest something about our students and then know anything about our students. So it's very important from my perspective to make sure that we allow it in a, a way that's approved by the board, so then I can approach a Chat G P T, or more likely, a, a Google Gemini, because that has a state contract in place already, to be able to say, we will use your model, but only with these very specific guidelines in terms of what you can do with what we put in. So basically, anybody who's logged in with northbranfordschools.org, it's basically, they can't see anything we're putting in. So we can use their model, but they cannot ingest anything that we put into the model itself, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Yes.
Would allowing the use of A I incur any cost to the board education?
No, not at this time. We're not discussing any paid A I models. There, there are districts who have gone that route already, especially on the data analysis side. That's not something that I'm entertaining at this point. Frankly, I think it's too early.
Have you heard any negative questions about this?
Uh, not for staff. I, I think there is chatter already, and, and I know, I'm sure teachers in our district have encountered already with students plagiarizing, uh, using A I at this point. I, I think that's kind of a universal that is happening. I think we will need tools eventually to be able to help police that a little bit better, frankly, with students.
And that would be a cost, would be a buy?
Yes, eventually.
Can you test whether it's generated by A I or not?
Correct. But frankly, we're not allowing it with our students right now anyways, but we really can't stop them at home from going on one of these models, asking it the homework question and kind of copying and pasting that in. So this policy we're running on now, I do not anticipate any incurred, any cost incurred. I do think eventually there will be probably an ask from staff for some type of a turn it in type platform or other plagiarism checker that specifically can look at if the content was generated by A I. I will say I've evaluated those. They're, they are pretty good at this point, but they can only give you within a, a, you know, a reasonable degree that I can predict whether it was A I or not. So you will have a student who writes in a manner that is very close to an A I model and will have their writing flack, that will happen. But it can tell you eight times out of ten at this point that most likely a piece of writing was generated by A I and not a student. So, yeah.
Do you have more slides? I have a series of questions, but I just want to-
No, no, I just, just that question.
Good, thank you for that. Some of that stuff is not necessarily new to me, but it's, it's good to be of interest. So what was, was there a need for this to come on board, or was this just, it's something to add, want to put this into motion, and, or like, what was that need, what was that desire?
Yeah, so I think across the state-
I mean, just, just at like here, not the state, just like-
Well, no. So why it came into our policy? I think every district that's updating their technology policies and their acceptable use policies are putting language in here specifically to protect us, knowing that it's, it's becoming ubiquitous enough at this point that if we don't have policies in place, staff are probably going to be using it anyways, and we'd rather have the legal protections around it in our policy.
Is it option A or B?
Correct.
Right. And then, do you think that there's a deficiency with that, like, if, to answer that in this district? Sorry, so you go with B?
Yes.
Are we needing a deficiency, or are we just, like, or is there something that's, like, what's the cause? Like, say we go with B, like, what's it?
I think the, the thing that worries me with B, frankly, I think staff and, and people in general are going to use A I even if we say don't use it.
Agreed.
I think I would rather allow it with guardrails, make sure we have training in place, and then also make sure that I have the legal safeguards in place, so that way I can tell staff, you can use A I, but only these specific vendors, and I can confidently say to the board that I know if, if a staff member copy and pastes student information there, that that's not being adjusted by an A I model. That's my biggest concern, frankly, is the student data privacy on that side.
All right. And then, so one is, are you familiar with districts that are using, or allowing, say, with following option B, okay? Are you familiar with districts that are using that and seeing pros, cons, wishing they didn't do that, changing policy?
Yeah. So there are not many districts that I, there, there are no districts, I should say, that I've heard of that have completely banned A I on their platforms at this point. There are districts who are giving feedback that basically, they need more training, basically, is what, is what the feedback has been from the directors of technology. And I'll talk about in a little bit, but I've actually reached out to a lot of my counterparts. We're meeting next week, probably twenty-five to thirty of the directors of technology within the state, mostly about security, but one of the things we're also talking about is A I, and how do we support staff with that? Because I think many districts are starting to kind of open the doors and say, okay, we're gonna explicitly allow this with guardrails, but then there hasn't been good training on the backend to say, well, now what? What do we do with it? What is an acceptable use of A I? Is it acceptable to create content for an assessment, for example? Is it appropriate to provide student feedback using A I? I think there's gray areas where we need to determine both professionally and technically what is allowable.
Right, yeah, you touched on one of those security points where someone just has, puts in, you know, Jondo or whatever into-
Correct.
Chat G P T, and the next thing you know, you got that student's information right there.
Correct.
So would all of that be determined before it was released to everyone?
To, say that again?
So would all, would, you know, so would say, you know, we go through and A I is approved, and then would that, would all the protection be put into place before Google starts using it?
Yes, absolutely. So just like with any other program that we would ever roll out in the district, before we roll it out, we have to have legal agreements signed with that vendor for student debt refills reasons. That's the state of Connecticut law, and that's, that's universal for whether we're using it with students or staff. So absolutely.
I mean, is this meeting with the rest of the district, or is it Thursday?
Sorry?
The next meeting with the peers, when is that?
Thursday. Uh, week from today.
Week from today. I'd be interested to hear that outcome before we make a vote for people on this. Because I'd like to see what other people across the state think, because, not that I don't, you know, whether you're for or against it right now, I'm just, that's my opinion.
Um, Tom, could you give us some examples of how it would be used? I think we, we heard a few about email response, returning email responses, or generating comments on report cards, things like that. What else would they, would they use it for? Can they use it for teaching aid, like teaching aids, or creating activities and things like that? What are some of the acceptable forms of using A I for them?
Well, I think those regulations would really need to be determined collaboratively at the building level. So just like any other tool, the buildings will need to decide amongst themselves with the school administration about what they think is an acceptable use. To your point, A I could do a lot of things. It could provide, technically speaking, comments on a report card. Do I personally think that's an acceptable use? No, I do not. But that would really be up to the building administrators to make that decision. It's, it's really my job to make sure they have the technical ability to decide to do it. It's really their job to determine whether they feel it's appropriate for their staff to do it that way.
We don't want to use technology to back ourselves out of a job.
Absolutely.
We want teachers to be there in person, using their personal skills, and not just students to make comments rather than a computer generated thing. Okay, so how long do you think, if we do eventually vote for this, how long do you think the rollout would take?
Um, so we are starting, I know I'm offering some P D sessions in November. I would love to think if in December or January, we could start having training for this and have a P D session in every building. But in terms of a rollout, it, it would really be, you know, both our ability to get a contract signed with a vendor, right? So I can't determine exactly how long that would take. If we decided to go with Google Gemini, they already signed a contract with the state, so that's pretty easy for us to go with. And then it's training staff, having them feel comfortable, and then giving them kind of a, a differentiated way to kind of dip their toes in the water with this. So you're gonna have staff who are very eager, who will probably use this on their own, who are ready to jump in and try this in their classrooms. You're gonna have staff who have no appetite to try this at all, and, and I think that's perfectly fine. I don't think in any way are we thinking about mandating that staff use this. It's another tool within their toolkit, potentially within their classroom, should they want to use it.
So I was looking at to his side, so I'm looking at things, and there are benefits for A I, but I'm reading that post with a lot of risks, especially to like debt, privacy insecurity.
Correct.
We're addressing that, bias and fairness, a balance between A I development automation and human interaction, transparency and its vulnerability. And some of the things that were mentioned, a teacher, someone might go home, they have it on their computer, they do it, they bring it to the classroom, maybe the site that they chose is not secure for student data.
Correct.
Maybe what they're written in isn't really inappropriate. So how are you going to vet that? How are you going to then, I think, workshop something out of order? Teachers, a skill to come up, and you have to be on top of that in order for none of this to happen. And one of the things that is interesting, is one article, Jay Bon, she did in two of twenty-four. This is from her presentation. Without using A I, students develop a core set of skills, including creative thinking and problem solving. By using an artificial intelligence tool to carry out these tasks, students aren't able to develop creativity. A I is built on an algorithm, and so while it can learn, it won't develop the same innovative approaches problems a human brain can when properly trained. Thus limiting not just the student's potential, but also their potential for leading their industry on the change. So that's my concern, is like, too much dependence on this, like, the control that we need, that it's not misused, that it's not mishandled. You have a lot more things that we do, you know, vetting this all the time, does that then happen? Making sure teachers don't read something in-
No, I, I, you know, I hear your concern. I will say, you know, the, the article you're citing is specifically talking about students. We are not, again, thinking about using this with students here. This is only for staff to use. I view this as a similar tool, frankly, to the internet. You know, there is a lot of inappropriate content on the internet. We do a very good job filtering and managing that. We also trust staff to be professionals. So as much as I put guardrails in place to make sure that staff are only on appropriate content with, when on our devices, within our network, frankly, I can't stop everything. There, there's no way that I could. It's whack a mole. I think you guys understand that. I trust them to be professionals, and in the same way, I would do that with this. I would put as many guardrails in place as I could. We provide ongoing training for staff about what is an appropriate use of artificial intelligence as a teacher, as a professional in the classroom. But at the end of the day, it would also be their professional responsibility to make sure they're using only approved tools, just as it would be any other tool that we're using, a technology base, and, you know, make sure they're bringing appropriate content[1753.98] And, you know, make sure they're bringing appropriate content to the classroom. It'd be their responsibility to vet that as well.
So you're saying that there would be, that it would not be only for kids to use? That it would be passed or something that only the staff can use, and that would not be given to students to use?
That, so to be clear, this is not password protected. It's just not allowed on our domain for students at all. So, so for example, if we open up, I would usually use Google Gemini because it's most likely the one we would be allowed to use just because they have a state agreement. Basically, no student would be able to sign in with our credentials on our devices to that platform whatsoever, whether it's on our device, on our network, or at home. We would not condone the use of that at all. The same thing with any other platform that we deemed inappropriate for staff. So for example, uh, if we decided that Chat GPT was not allowed for whatever reason, whether they wouldn't sign a data privacy agreement, whatever it is, we would just not allow our credentials to be used to sign into that platform. Now, could I stop a staff member from going on their personal device and signing in with their personal email? No, I cannot do that. Would I strongly, you know, message to them that as a professional, I don't suggest it, and I strongly discourage them from putting anything school related into that platform? Yes, yes, I would.
So you're saying you would use Gemini?
That is most likely the platform, um, the feedback that I've gotten from my counterparts, because they have a state agreement in place, the state of Connecticut for schools statewide, that is most likely the platform that I would choose to roll out first. I'm not saying it is the best. I'm not saying it's the only platform eventually we might use. But just from a legal standpoint, it would be the easiest one for us to roll out this year frankly.
Because of the safety?
Yes, because of the safety aspect and because of the safeguards and the state contract that's already in place. Correct.
But there was, uh, there was, on the internet, there were generally, or Gemini, that were totally false. And it's like, okay, and this is the one that I choose.
Yeah, every AI model can produce something that's not true, right? Just like any website can have content on it that's not true as well. At the end of the day, humans do have to vet any of this content. I think the authenticity of what's put out for the content, that's our job as professionals to teach kids how to vet that. I think that what I'm concerned about is the legality of the platform itself. So making sure that any information that's put in there, we have control over it. And like first, God forbid, there was ever a data breach on their side, that we have safeguards in place that I'm notified as in a timely manner that that data breach happened. Yeah.
So as I'm reading this, I think I'm understanding that we're not so much restricting the use of AI by teachers, by professionals. You can do it on your home computer and make a copy of what you've created and send it to yourself. It seems to me as though we're questioning more whether we are to provide the platform for the teachers. As I read this, using it on any of the board's computer systems, but the option A doesn't say anything about what computer you necessarily use it on. So am I correct that that?
Well, it's within the, yeah, it's within the section basically saying it's explicitly allowed on our devices and on our network. So that is the true determinant. We own our devices, we own our network. So if, to your point, if a staff member decides to do it on their home network, on their home device, on their personal, you know, email account as credentials, that is, that's completely their prerogative as a, you know, personal choice. But if they're using any of our property, whether it be the network or our devices, that's where we kind of have legal jurisdiction to step in.
So bottom line, what is your recommendation?
My personal recommendation, um, and this is not, I'm agnostic when it comes to platform frankly. I want the most legal protections in place for our staff and our students. I think the best way to do that is to allow AI with guardrails and then allow me to engage a company to get a legal agreement in place with them. I think, I shouldn't say I think, I know that we have staff members who are already using AI. I know that we have staff members who are using AI to help them in the classroom. I think that's just a fact of life. I would rather do it in a way that I can be supportive of that and also protect the district and the students' interest. And I think the best way to do that is to allow with guardrails.
Do you see a future in education without AI?
No.
What about, how many school districts in the state are currently using AI?
Legally or just in general, maybe not sanctioned?
Legally as, as a policy?
That I don't know. I know that, you know, at that meeting next week, that's what we're engaging about. Most districts are starting this process of updating their policies to this point. This model policy by shipment is what most groups are going with. The feedback, at least that I've gotten initially, is that most districts are looking to do option A, similar to we are. So allowing it with those guardrails in place and then engaging as a group to try to get state agreements with these vendors. It's much easier to get a state kind of unified agreement with a vendor rather than go one by one, every district signing a legal agreement. It's also much more cost effective frankly.
So basically it's already being used more than, right? And we want to be able to make sure that we have safety in place.
That is correct.
I think it could actually be made to the internet. So it's kind of that, you know, our filter is in our ability to control the internet and the access to our devices and the platform. It's very similar to this. This has been, this is around, but it's gaining so much traction. It's been coming this now. It's not going to that.
This is kind of stronger. I'd like to make a motion that we approve policy number P two-three-seven-zero, acceptable use in internet safety employees, option A, allowing artificial intelligence with conditions as submitted. A second? All right, then we'll agree discussion.
I'm just wondering if we're optioning, we just talked about if we need to modify a little bit and do something about where we monitor, vet some of the things that we talked about. Because this just talks about, that's with conditions, so that's, that's the one.
But I
It says with conditions.
But I would also say, I mean, any, any tool, whether it be AI, like any new platform that we have, it is my responsibility within this position to vet, to make sure that it meets Connecticut State student data privacy laws. So I think it is kind of by default that anything, anything that we bring in with be AI or not, I will be overseeing in that capacity.
And monitor?
Correct.
For inappropriate use.
Correct, which we would do for any platform, whether it be AI or Google searches. We monitor it all.
Before we take a vote on this, just think about it, right? Just going to the meeting with a bunch of colleagues and counterparts, you know, hopefully coming back with some more information, you know, wait an extra week here. And we're not like, you know, right, his week, our month, big deal. And we're already in the weeds with it, so if you come back with something, that's, this is, you know, something that I think is pretty important here.
I don't think that they're going to meet one district vote that's going to pass today at this meeting, right?
I, I
For the most part, everybody's
I don't want to say definitively only another.
What I'm suggesting is that, that a meeting of the minds, obviously, everybody returns back some information that may modify this policy as it's, that's what I'm trying to say.
So do you want to?
I mean, yeah, that's the discussion. I mean, that's the discussion, so.
A table for one? We have a motion on the table.
There is one on the table, so we
But we're still in discussion though.
Right, we're still in discussion. I mean, it's either, it's either going to be A or B, and I'm not really in favor personally. There is a motion on the table. Does anybody have any further discussion?
Could I?
Sure.
Do you mind my offer?
No.
I'm going to put this out there. If, if the board does approve option A or B, however you want to go with it tonight, or if you want to table it, regardless, I am happy to come back next month, report out on kind of what the feedback was from that meeting. And if at that time we need to change it, this is really part of the regulations, not the policy. I believe no vote is needed for us to change the regulations at that point because it's actually the purview of the administrators. So the regulation could be adjusted at that point if we feel that that's necessary.
Is that true? You can change policy now?
The regulation itself
No, I'm sorry. Yes, that's, I meant without, without us voting on it, I was going to say.
This isn't, this is actually within the administrative regulations, not the policy. So my understanding is it could be changed after the fact. Yes, sir.
Is there any other discussion?
We'll do a roll call.
Did you want to add something about?
No.
Waiting for more information?
I would like to wait, but the motion's on, so we have to say, take a vote. If there's enough notes or to remove, to remove that, um, resume this motion.
What kind of information you want to?
No, I'm just, I'd like to hear when he's coming back. And I still, I still think that we might need to put more into that option. I just don't like the way it's written, I'm sorry. I'm not totally against AI, but I just have to reading a lot of it and reading, I'm cautious.
Do we ever see anything with that allowing students access to this? Do we see evidence of opening the door for later students having access to?
This does not explicitly, because this is a policy for staff, this does not address student use at all. I will say there is, like I think I said before, there's no platform currently existing that is legally allowable with students. I anticipate within the next year that there will be a vendor who tries to come to market with that. That will be up for the state to determine whether or not they agree that that's legally allowable. And then that will be brought to the board as an audit decision if we ever wanted to introduce that. But I don't think frankly, there's any appetite at this point to introduce that with students.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Yeah, I guess we'll take a vote. Chairman Bondi? Yes. Vice Chair Nafrio? Secretary Sienna? Judy Vannan? Yes. Deputy Canada?
No.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Tom.
Good night. Okay, so move on to. Well, that, do you want to introduce the policies? Do you want, I'm going to that one because I'm concerned here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve House CP one-zero-one five sex, sexual harassment. Students as
Second. So you have any discussion? You can go first.
Okay, so this is, this is just an update of the policy that's in place now. There's been, um,
Just from our, from our meeting, if you want to read this.
Yes, exactly. So this is the law that's in place. We may not agree with all aspects of the, of the new policy, but it is the law and we need to have something in place so that if there is any issue with these, with these problems, sexual harassment or sexual discrimination, that we have the policies in place and we know what needs to get done sequentially to, to, to take care of it. So basically, you know, when we met with the lawyer, and she went over a lot of this, we met with her because we were for negotiations, we got human downtime. So we don't really think that they were suited from anything. But basically, like I took some notes of what she says. Policy reflects the law. The law is already in place. We need to adopt a policy that follows the law. Staff, parents, students, everybody needs to know what the steps are if something needs to be handled. You know, it's, voting for this is not an endorsement of any kind for anything. It's so people know the procedures.
And they have to change. And there, we have two administrators that oversee and do extensive training and workshops and throughout the district for this. It's important because we rely on it for the protection of our staff, students, parents.
And it's important to note that, that there's hundreds of thousands of dollars of federal funds that are attached to it as well. So, um, that's
So any other discussion? Go on. We have a first and a second, right? Roll call please. Chairman Bondi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Judy Vannan?
Yes.
Deputy Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
Passes and hands.
I'd like to make a motion to approve House CP one-two-one five, high school graduation and fundamentals as submitted.
A second? Any discussion? Roll call? Chairman Bondi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Judy Vannan?
Yes.
Deputy Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve House CP four-two-nine, physical activity undirected by unsuited discipline as submitted.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call please. Chairman Bondi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Judy Vannan?
Yes.
Deputy Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve House CP two-two-three, qualifications, discrimination, sexual harassment in a workplace in four years as submitted.
A second? Any discussion? Roll call? Chairman Bondi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Judy Vannan?
Yes.
Deputy Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy P thirty-one. Hosting Smith.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call? Chairman Bondi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Judy Vannan?
Yes.
Deputy Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve House CP ninety-one three, construction and hosting agenda as submitted.
Second? Any discussion? Last roll call here. Chairman Bondi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Judy Vannan?
Yes.
Deputy Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
And we move on to ACIS? Thank you, Beth, for all that information. Kim Vannan?
No, I didn't have time.
Okay, no worries. Building Committee, well, it's coming out already.
We've got a class in about an hour and a half on Monday as well.
Sounds interesting.
Yeah, no, there's a lot going on there in terms of the different players. And to be honest, keeping up with that discussion in months of it, it's still better to serve that, I don't know. But I think we have a pretty solid way forward here, given that just the
I know it's a long time to, thank you guys for all the time you've been on the meetings.
Yeah.
Ready to get your Mondays back?
No doubt.
No, yeah, of course.
This goes to December, and then it was
Asher?
Is there, um, just about on the building committee, um, Scott, could the board receive a copy of the, um, the storage building plans and, um, funders?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, communication, no meeting? Okay, before we go into executive session, any visitors press? Okay, go to the board?
Yes.
Go ahead.
We all have something to say. I really just wanted to thank Superintendent Spoonmaker for the event that occurred, helping and supporting Willie Delacamera and Cecorelli and Harrison Hill Farms. That was really an incredible event. Just, just Kim Dawson came to me, she said, what can we do as a district? What can we do? And so let's go talk to Scott, made an appointment the next morning. And I have to say, within two hours, Scott had every single principal in building onboard. No, this is less than twenty-four hours because it went off.
Every principal said, jumped in instantly, yes. And it was at the end of the day. So the fact that they were like, yes, sure, they're probably, and somehow, I don't know how, it was the most beautiful, unbelievable. I think that like, he was like, oh my God, when we turned that corner and saw all those kids with signs and, it was unbelievable.
A lot of teachers said, I don't know, said, there was video made, I think they made the video. I know you saw it, some of my neighbors saw it. People were teared up, people were really emotional, and so were we.
So were we.
Very emotional. It just, it was an incredible show of community support. I just want to thank everybody.
Everybody.
Who pumped this off. It was amazing, but especially.
Boom, boom, boom.
Yep, Superintendent Schoolmaker was amazing. Did you have something else?
No, I wanted to thank him for spearheading it, you know, the R D and going to Scott and getting it. That's fantastic.
I just want to say real quick, I was at MBIS last night for their back to school day. And, well, it was incredibly, it was fantastic. And like parents had great feedback. The real like sticker for me was there's three different staff members in that school who were there when I was in that school, or at least in this district. And to see like two teachers I had and two of them there as well. Like, I think it's a testament to the environment that we have here, that we have teachers who have made their careers out of staying here and staff. So. For listening, everybody. Well, I have a message from former board chair Sean, who wanted me to say this to the board, from her daughter. Your brand education prepared you for college. You leave classes and teachers do their job, and I got a great education. I would pass it on. Anything? Anything else to go to the board? Okay, then.
Circle session.